All right, we're legit. Terry, are you there?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Okay, hi there. So, we're gonna open the meeting for February 9th, but I'm actually gonna pass straight over to Kim Nguyen as Chair of the Housing Authority first. So, Kim, go ahead, take it away for Housing Authority.
Thank you. May I ask that all commissioners mute their phones when not speaking and, of course, unmute when you're gonna speak, and please identify yourself. Clerk, may you please take role?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Brightigan.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Booy.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Solario.
Here.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment?
No, there is no one.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent items, may I get a motion and a second to approve?
I have a motion.
That was a motion from Commissioner Beckles and a second from Vice Chair Deidre Tuhan Nguyen. Clerk, may you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Brightigan.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Solario.
Yes.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Thank you. Are there any matters from Commissioner? Hearing none, I will adjourn our meeting and kick it back to City Council, thank you.
Alrighty, good evening, everyone. We will call the Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 Meeting of the Garden Grove City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Brightigan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Brightigan, may I please call upon you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Can everybody rise, face the flag, and over heart, begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that takes us on to oral communications. Madam Clerk, do we have any oral communicate? Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, for starters?
Yes, we do. We have Mr. Tom Raiber. He's on his way into the chamber.
Hi, this is Tom Raiber. I'd like to start off this three-minute situation with thanking Bill Murray's crew, awesome crew. First of all, I'd like to thank Brent, to passing the word on to Buster, for a palm tree on Bailey Street that was bypassed six months ago by the contractor that the city hired to cut the trees. It actually was cut by the City of Garden Grove, so I think that the City of Garden Grove should backcharge this contractor for three vehicles and three man-hours to go ahead and make this palm tree safe, due to the fact that there was over three years' worth of branches just dangling from it. I also like to go ahead and thank Leah. I met Leah because of the dumpster from 1277 Valley View. They had over fifty bags of trash not in the dumpster. Those people do not know how to throw trash away. Due to Leah's communication skills with myself, I've worked with her about the dumpster, the gophers, and actually, yesterday, urination. The landscapers at 12777 Valley View pissed in the dumpster area, and the urine went to the sidewalk where I walk as an American. Eyes wide open. I was born in '61, and my education of the American history has been lied to, to myself and to all Americans. I have been a slave since 1871, when our American, our United States became a corporation. Look it up, look up 1871. So, in 1871, that's when they took land away from two states to make Washington DC because a corporation had to be on foreign soil. Part of the bailout, because of the Civil War, came from the City of London, which also is a foreign land within England, and the Vatican, which is also a foreign land within Italy. We have been slaves since we were born. On our birth certificate, we are a commodity. We're not a person. We've been traded back and forth. As a corporation, our names have been in all caps. That's part of the procedures of being a corporation. You always have everything in caps. I'm requesting the City of Garden Grove to go ahead and be the first city to go ahead and change our first name to be the first letter capital and the rest of it lowercase. Also, on the American flag, if you noticed, that there is a gold frill or fringe on it. That gold fringe there is not because of America, that's because of maritime law that we are beholding to the City of London and the Vatican. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Terry, do we have anybody else there wishing to speak in public?
No, there's no more speakers. We did receive written comments. The first topic is from Lynn Groff, asking for support from the mayor and council to be a voice for the GGUSD students for opening schools, permitting school sports, correcting an IT error made on Pacifica High School grade point averages, and allowing a vape shop on Lamson and not, asking that it be disallowed to have a vape shop on Lamson and not in proximity to public schools. The next topic is from Robert Harrison. He's asking for support to create a task force to investigate permit parking in residential neighborhoods for the purpose of crime prevention, cleaner streets, residential access for on-street parking. The last written communications are from Jill Freshour. The topic is, "On behalf of Jetty Street residents, asking for support for a task force to examine the viability of permit parking on residential streets." And that's all we have tonight.
Alrighty, thank you, Madam Clerk. So, we will conclude oral communications and we'll recess to other legislative agencies, starting with, what do we have, Successor Agency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please call roll for Successor Agency?
Member Brightigan. Member O'Neill.
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here.
Member Brightigan. Member Brightigan is absent.
Yeah, he might just be muted, we'll see. I'm sure he'll pop back up. We'll go ahead and take Successor Agency agenda, so we already did oral communications simultaneously with City Council. Go on to consent items, just one item, receive and file in a minute, so I have a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen, I move to approve.
Deidre Nguyen, I'm second it.
Thank you. Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call, roll call vote.
Member Brightigan. Member O'Neill.
Yeah, I was kicked out.
O'Neill, yeah.
Member Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Member Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Member Brightigan.
You'll have to forgive me, my phone booted me out of the meeting, I had to call back in. What are we voting on?
We're voting on the minutes for the Successor Agency.
Oh, yes.
And Chair Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
You just raised the water rates, George, just kidding. Matters, sorry about that. Matters from Successor Agency members. Seeing none, we'll adjourn and go back to City Council. So, we'll reconvene City Council. Takes us on to consent items, recommended that items 2A through 2D be acted on simultaneously, unless anyone would like to pull any items. Do we have any requests to pull, or else a motion?
Motion to move, Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Second, Klaffenstein.
Please roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alrighty, thank you. That takes us on to public hearings, we do have one, item 3A.
Item 3A is approval of substantial amendment number five to the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan for the Use of Housing and Urban Development Funding. And I believe that Lisa Kim is here to give that report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is to request the City Council consideration of a substantial amendment number five to the fiscal year 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. This item is in follow-up to the January 26 Council meeting presentation of the draft comprehensive strategic plan to address homelessness, in which a framework of goals and strategic actions were identified to address homelessness in Garden Grove. Concurrently with the community engagement process to share our homelessness resource information and the draft plan that is now underway, staff is further recommending allocation of resources towards additional homeless services. The funds are a combination of supplemental third round of CARES Act funding allocation in the amount of approximately $1.6 million from CDBG CB3 funds, approximately $400,000 in prior year CDBG entitlement funds, a reallocation of ESG CV2 funds in the amount of approximately $400,000. Council in an early action, under the Housing Authority, took action to approve an appropriation of $150,000 from the Low Moderate Income Housing Asset Trust Fund. Collectively, the council action this evening would program approximately $2.3 million to support additional homeless programs and services, and approximately $250,000 towards program administration. At this time, I would like to ask Chief Deray to share some of the coordinated efforts between public safety and community development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. The Police Department and Community Development have been working together in various capacities in addressing our homeless issues in the community. We have focused on a need for a mental health component to support our efforts. We have discussed a mobile mental health unit that could carry the capacity to handle the mental health issues and follow-up on case management of identified patients. I will hand that back over to Director Kim.
Thank you, Chief Deray. In closing, in addition to exploring the expansion of mental health services as part of our homeless services program, staff will also seek opportunities to expand our workforce development program with some of our current service providers that handle those areas of services. In addition, we'll be exploring additional homeless shelter resources to assist our Garden Grove individuals at risk of homelessness, as well as those individuals impacted by COVID. This concludes our report, and Chief Deray and I are available for any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me remind everyone, this is a public hearing item, so we will open the public hearing at some point, but does anyone have any questions or clarification questions or comments at this point of staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone wishing to speak, or anyone who has submitted comments on this particular item?
There is no one.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Colleagues, what is your pleasure?
A motion to approve, this is Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen. I'm second, Klaffenstein.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yeah.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. That takes us on next to Commission Committee Matters. We do still have outstanding the appointments for the Administrative Board of Appeals. I don't think we're quite ready to take action on that yet, I'd still like to kind of make the rounds and hear some feedback before we finalize that. I don't believe there's any pressing issues coming up before that board in the near term, so I think we're okay to continue that for a few weeks. Do we need a motion to do that, or do we just, we just do it? Okay, so, I would ask Madam Clerk if we could re-agendize that for the next meeting. And with that, that takes us on to matters. We do actually have several different matters listed, so I'll go ahead and start with 5A, which is Discussion on Adoption of Proclamation Celebrating February as Black History Month as requested by Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen. Take it away, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. I would like to add this to our cycle of annual proclamations during certain months. Not sure if there needs to be any more discussion. I have a motion to approve. Thank you.
I'll second it, George.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item 5B, Discussion on Adoption of a Proclamation Celebrating the Tet Lunar New Year Commencing February 12th, 2021, as requested by Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen. Go ahead and take it away again, Kim.
Thank you. Again, I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. I will just say, I'm very bummed that we can't get together and celebrate and participate and praise as we normally will, would, so I thought it would be a nice gesture, since we've never done it before, to have a proclamation in place of the in-person activities. Not sure if anyone has any other comments to add to that, but again, self-explanatory, I'll motion to approve.
I do have one quick question. I do have a quick question. It says we're have a proclamation celebrating commencing February 12th. If we're adding it to the annual calendar, is it always February 12th, or does the date change?
The date would change, but I think we would know that it typically happens around this time period and just adjust it, as well as the mention for this year, it's the year of the aux, so that would also have to change on an annual basis.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Colleagues, in regard to a question by George, this information is readily available on internet. If stop, just go and search for Lunar New Years. It will list out, you know, in advance for the next 10 years, or even longer than that. So, I think, I think it would be something that staff can actuate accordingly every year.
Great. Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, last but certainly not least, item 5C, Financial Update for Fiscal Year 2021, 2020-2021, and Budget Considerations for Fiscal Years 2021 through 2023, as requested by City Manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've asked our Finance Director Patricia Song to just give us an update. It's been a while since we've given council an update on the status of our budget. She will give us a little update on this as it relates to revenue, how we're doing from an expenditure standpoint, and then, just to remind council members, in April, end of March, April, we will be coming back to council with our annual revenue forecast to let you know where we stand on that front as well. So, at this point, I would ask Patricia to walk us through the considerations that she's put together for us.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This is Patricia Song. I'm here tonight to provide you with an update on our fiscal year 2021 financial performance, and as well as some of the initial discussion on the budget consideration for the next two fiscal years. First, I'd like to provide you with a recap of the audited general fund fiscal year 1920 operating results. As you recall, when we amended our fiscal year 2021, which is the current year's budget, in June last year, we had anticipated a surplus of 3.2 million from the, from that year, from 1920 year, and this amount, along with an additional 4.3 million from the existing fund balance, was used to cap the gap, the anticipated budget deficit for the year. Now, the positive news is that we ended fiscal year 1920 with a surplus of 15.2 million, per the audited financial statements. The caveat is, among the 15.2 million, 7 million was a temporary so-called budgetary savings, which are from the unfinished projects or programs that were slated for that year, and the 7 million has been carried over to the current year to complete those projects or programs, and therefore, it is not available for future use or other uses. Now additionally, the higher surplus was due to the CARES Act money that was allocated to the city, which amounted to 3.7 million, and I will share a little bit more on the CARES Act funding in a little bit. So, worth to mention is that in fiscal year 1920, the revenue brought in by Measure-O alone was close to 20 million. This was the first full year since Measure-O was passed by our community. Without the Measure-O money, we would have ended the year with a 5-million deficit. I'd also like to provide everyone a quick update on the COVID-19-related costs and relief funds that we received. We are 11 months into the pandemic. Costs directly related to the pandemic, reported by all departments within the city, totaled about 2.8 million, and these costs are the costs directly related to the pandemic. In other words, that if it's not for the pandemic, we wouldn't have incurred those costs. So, the majority of this amount is directly, is on the personnel, direct personnel costs. A total of about 44,300 staff hours were reported directly attributable to the COVID-19, and additional 10,000 hours were paid by the city under the federal Family First Coronavirus Response Act. About half a million was spent on PPE, materials, and other equipment. A portion of these costs are reimbursable from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, but due to the strict reimbursement requirements, we estimate approximately 500 among the entire total 2.8 million could be eligible for reimbursement. Staff will be working with OES closely to prepare for our reimbursement requests. These direct costs were absorbed by our, absorbed by our existing operating budget. The direct personnel costs were offset by the coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security, or the CARES Act fund, that was allocated to the city between June and October 2020. Total CARES Act funding received by the city to date was 6.7 million. We were promised with an additional 12.2 million that has been allocated to the various programs, including housing, including economic developments, small business loans, and all of that information is presented in Table 2 of the staff report. I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that in addition to the cost incurred, the city also suffered significant revenue loss directly caused by the pandemic. We estimate the loss of revenue accumulated to about 20 million since March 2020, and is primarily in the transient occupancy tax, TOT, along with the various recreation programs, events, and facility rentals. Now, I would like to provide you with an update on mid-year 2021 general fund financial performance. On the expenditure side, we are right on target. Staff has been strictly following the cost containment measures implemented in early April 2020, which included hiring freeze for non-swarm positions, limited travel and training, and reduced spending in capital assets or equipment. Personnel budget-wise, we are also on target at 50% mark at mid-year. In the past years, we were able to rely on pretty significant budget savings from vacancies to fund for unforeseen items, but this year, since we defunded 22 vacant positions to balance our budget, we will likely not have much budget savings at the end of the fiscal year. Unforeseen cost increases or mandatory spending will have to be funded from existing fund balance. In other words, we have a very tight budget this year, and staff does not anticipate cost savings, much of the cost savings at the end of the year. On the revenue side, we also anticipate we will be reaching our targeted level, not to say that all revenue sources will come in as expected, but overall, we are able to reach the targeted amount. As I shared before, the three major revenue sources for the city's general funds are property tax, sales tax, including Measure-O, and TOT. These taxes account for about 80% of total general fund revenue. Property tax is expected to slightly go above the budgeted level due to increases in assessed valuation, which is the countywide situation that we were able to enjoy in Orange County here, mostly in the residential areas, and also, there is an increase, which is out of our control, in the residual tax. This residual tax is really the tax increment money prior to the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, so it's really based on every successor agency's financial obligations, and the remainder of the tax increment, increment money that the state has the sole discretion on will be allocated to the city as a taxing entity. So, that, on that side, we're estimating we're gonna be a little bit better than what we have budgeted for. Now, TOT has suffered more losses than what we had anticipated when we adopted our amended fiscal year 2021 budget. For the first six months of the year, we have received a total of 2.7 million in TOT revenue, and this is less than 20% of the pre-pandemic level. In other words, we lost 80%, you know, in the TOT revenue alone. In other words, we lost 80%, you know, in the TOT revenue alone. Our amended budget projected TOT revenue for the year will average about 40% of the pre-pandemic level, which translated to 10.5 million for the year. But based on the year-to-date actual amounts, the fact of the, you know, some of the major, like Disneyland, Anaheim Convention Center, and, you know, our Great Wolf Lodge still being closed, we are revising our budget amount to 5.3 million. This means that there will be a $5 million decrease. The revenue, anticipated revenue will be $5 million lower than what we have anticipated in our amended budget. Fortunately, retail activities have been strong since the beginning of the fiscal year. The most recent estimate from HDL, which we obtained by end of January, showed their estimate of overall sales tax for the year will reach 44.7 million. To put in perspective, this is 5 million higher than what we have included in our amended budget, which is also from the HDL's estimate. So this 5 million over our budgeted amounts will be able to offset the 5 million shortage in the TOT category. And overall, revenue and expenditures are, you know, will be remaining as expected in our budget, fortunately. The mid-year update for the general fund revenue expenditures are all listed in Table 4 on the staff report. We are still anticipating budget deficit of 10 million by end of the year, which again will be absorbed by, absorbed by the existing fund balance in the fund. So in considering the funding needs for next two fiscal years, we probably should first evaluate the 22 positions we defunded in this year. A listing of these positions is included in Table 5. To fund these positions, it will require about 2.3 million in next year, and the cost will further escalate by about 5 to 8% for the following years due to pension costs and increase in pay. Now, many of these positions carry critical responsibilities. The inability to fund for these positions may pose a threat to the levels of essential services that we're providing the community. And also, as we are gearing up for the development of our biannual budget, we continue to focus on the priorities the city council has established. These include improving infrastructure, quality of life and beautification in districts, public safety, economic development, homelessness, and so on. In the coming weeks and months, we will be, continue to reach out to the city council for discussion and additional directions on the biannual budget development. As Scott mentioned, in April, late March or early April, we will be providing a more in-depth analysis on the revenue forecast for the next two years, as well as cost analysis as we come closer to, you know, in eight months of the operations that year, we'll have a better idea. We'll have our contract amount from OCFA, hopefully by end of the month, and then we'll have some updated property tax figures. And then we can see with the vaccine, with the development of the pandemic, if any of the major attraction, the hotel industry will be performing better and when they will be performing better. So we recommend, this is just a report on the updated financial situation. What we're recommending is the city council to receive and file this report. And this concludes my, my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Patricia, for just spelling that all out so clearly. Colleagues, any questions or comments of staff or Patricia or Scott? Okay, seen them. This is not a, well, it's just a receive and file. So do we need an action? It's just a receive and file item, so there's no action needed. So thank you. With that, we will conclude item 5C. And that will take us on just to matters in general. I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Kim Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick mention to my colleagues. I've been working very closely with our IT department to go over our city website to try to make some modest changes to allow for more user-friendly and easier paths to get to where we want to go on the website. Just wanted to make mention that I've been working on that. Other than that, I have no comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Stephanie Klaufenstein, D5.
Nothing to report, just want to wish my husband a very happy 13th wedding anniversary. That's it.
Cool, congratulations. Councilmember Patrick Fatbouy, D4.
Yes, I have a few items. First of all, I would like to wish everyone a very happy Lunar New Years. This year, the New Year's Eve will be Thursday evening, so, and that would be the 11. And the first day of the Lunar New Years will be Friday, February 12. For the past eight years, I have been involved with organizing the Ted Parade for people in Orange, in Southern California. This year, unfortunately, we will not have a Ted Parade, nor any Ted Festival due to the COVID. And there will be some people that going to temple, going to church, but not very much activity going on there. I hope to bring it back to the city council for a new permit for the years of 2022, Ted Parade in Garden Grove. If you recall, for the past seven or eight years, I have been organizing the Ted Parade, but it was being organized in the city of Westminster. And last year is the first year that our organization bring it forward to do it on Westminster Avenue in the city of Garden Grove, and it was very well received. And I wholeheartedly thank you, Mayor Jones, and my colleagues for approving a permit to do the, another Ted Parade also in Garden Grove for 2021. But because of the COVID, we canceled it during the summer. And hopefully COVID will go away, and I will bring it back to ask the city council to approve it, another Ted Parade for 2020, for the years of 2023. On the second item, I have been approached by resident, again, the resident of my district four, as well as District 6, about the chronic issue with parking along the public street in front of the house. This issue had been brought to us, to me, in 2016 by resident of District Number 6. And it had been going on, and they had become very frustrated. And then again, also in that years by another family near Chapman and Hester. And lately, people in District 4, in my district, have also, you know, seen, you know, the parking issue become very chronic. And so I would like to, you know, I talked to our city manager and also traffic engineering. They mentioned that is, that there is not much that we can do. But I think that that is not, not good enough. I, I believe that this issue become very big problem for our resident, and it will become worse in the near future as more ADU, more high-density housing is being, being built. So I think it is very prudent that, that we form a task force to, to really understand the heart, cause of the problem, and hopefully we can come up with some solution. Now, I know, I know it is, it's not an easy solution to target, but just to say that there is nothing we can do, I think is, is very, very disheartening for the resident to hear. So I would like to ask for your support to agendaize at the next city council, to form a committee, or whether we do that within conjunction with the traffic committee. But I think that is something that need also a little oversight from, from the city council. So I would like to agendaize it, and I hope to have the support from Mayor Jones and all the city council.
Thank you.
Is that a motion or?
Hold on, before.
That's a motion.
Because I think we could just vote to, to form a committee, right? We don't need to put, agendaize it.
Well, I, I thought if we vote on anything, we got to agendaize it first. Correct me if, if that is, if I'm wrong, Omar.
No, to take any, any action, you would need to agendaize it first.
Yeah. I, before we go too much further on that, I'd maybe just weigh in. This is a significant problem, obviously, and we should spend time trying to figure out whatever we can possibly do to help fix it. There's no easy solution, as we've learned. There's problems with, associated with going with permitting or going with any other things like that. So it's, it's complicated. But I would suggest maybe we start by deferring this to Traffic Commission, let them do a study session on it or something and see what, as opposed to forming an extra ad hoc committee or another committee necessarily right off the bat. That's, I always tend to err on the side of that just because we tend to form committees willy-nilly, and it just creates more kind of staff work to create an agenda for a committee and convene a committee when we could maybe otherwise just send this to traffic, which is already serving that purpose.
I would generally agree with that. Mayor Jones, I would generally agree with that. This problem had been going on for years and years, at least since 2016, and it had been brought to the attention to the city management and traffic engineers. So I, I would be okay with bringing it to the Traffic Commission, but I think it is important that the city council also went in to let the traffic committee understand, you know, you know, where we want to go. Because I hate to see that they take a look at this and say, and feel that there's nothing we can do, which is the answer that I have got, which is the answer that I have received from, you know, our traffic engineers department and, and from the city management.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to, I like your, your thinking there with letting the Traffic Commission handle this. However, I think we need to be target-specific with them and basically challenge them to come up with some constructive solution that they could present to us. Because, you know, as Councilman Bowie said, this is a decades-old problem now, and it's getting worse, and as you said, it's going to get even worse, more worse.
Yeah.
You know, we, we need to, we need to come up with some solution, and sometimes it takes people, you know, thinking outside the box or whatever euphemism you want to say. But honestly, I think having the commission focus on it, maybe a study session or two, coming to us with some suggestions, I think that could be very helpful for it.
Mayor, if I may, this is Councilmember Klaufenstein, really quickly. I don't think there's anything.
Stephanie? I'm so sorry, but before you, I was just gonna, I was gonna call upon you and Kim, actually, and just for context to say, this is a problem that I think most closely affects your district and Kim's district, so I was gonna ask if you guys had comments. So please go ahead, you were gonna jump in and do it, and then maybe Kim wants to jump in after.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think that parking has become a city-wide issue. I think every one of us on this council has probably had multiple phone calls or emails with someone with, you know, expressing concerns. Myself in District 5, obviously backing up to the resort district and the convention center, I have had numerous issues of residents just feeling that congestion and this issue, and, and desperately hoping that we can seek some, some finality solutions, whatever that may be. And I do like and agree that, that I think our Traffic Commission, we have been there for a reason, let's utilize them. There's some fresh faces on that commission now, so I, I think it's a great opportunity to hear from them. Plus, they are living and breathing in the district some of these problems every day, so they might be able to really shed some light on what they're experiencing in that specific district. And through that, I think it probably put together some great information and maybe some ideas to move forward with. So maybe that is the right place to start. And from that, if a committee is born or other things need to happen down the road, so be it. I think we just have to show that we're being as proactive as possible about an issue that's definitely affecting the residents every day.
Well said. Kim, anything to add?
Yes, just very quickly, I do want to echo and, and say that I completely agree with Councilmember Klaufenstein's suggestion. I think we should need to start with the Traffic Commission. I'd like to add that this has been an issue that I've been hearing and busy working on since I've been elected in 2016. I've probably annoyed the heck out of the work director, Bill Murray, with a lot of my requests regarding that particular neighborhood between Lamson and Hester. I've also bugged the heck out of our police chief, and I know that he's dedicated a significant amount of resources to patrol that area, to do some studies and figure out what can be done. Done a lot of painting of red curbs, stop signs, you know, looking at that. So this has not necessarily gone unnoticed, and it's not that things haven't been getting done. There, a lot of people are really adamant about wanting permit parking, and there's a lot of unintended consequences that come with that. So this needs to be looked at very carefully before we make an abrupt decision. Also, you know, it's a housing issue, not so much a parking issue, right? You have people, I've said this before, we have people doubled and tripled up, and the space is not meant to withhold that number of people and cars, and so that's why you see such a huge, you know, disproportionate amount of parking issues. So just want to circle back on that as well. And then, but I completely agree, let's, if we could please start with the Traffic Commission. I know that the Traffic Commission a few years ago did a study on the area and permits were recommended again, so if we could just have them relook at that area and other pockets in the city that are seeing some heavy parking issues, I think that would be a great first start.
Great. Any other comments or, and also, legal counsel, do we actually, can we just give direction to send this to Traffic Commission, or does that need to come back next week for any kind of formal action?
You can give direction.
Yeah, okay. So I don't believe we actually should take any formal action on this, we just give direction, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
But I think the direction needs to be specific to, to, to attempt to come up with some solutions. Don't just look at it, but let's literally try to fix problems here, not just stare at it, say, there's nothing we can do. We need to focus on it with the intent of fixing the problem.
Yeah.
Mayors and colleagues, this is Councilman Bowie here, to update everyone that this problem is not happened in District 5 and 6 anymore. It become a chronic problem in my district number four, especially a lot of people in the neighborhood between, you know, near. Bow on.
Hold on, you're, hold on, you're cutting out.
Okay, let me, let me put on regular phone, so. So, so this problem is now become very chronic, not just in District 5 and 6 that I have been, that have calling me left and right, but also I receive so many phone call from people near Brookhurst and Trask. Some even walk even to my house and talk to me about it. So people along, you know, local streets, just as hope, Bowens, Adams are now having to deal with this issue. And so that's why I told them that I will bring this up at tonight's city council to see if we can bring up. And if we want to start with a Traffic Commission, that is, that is okay with me, but I think it's very important that we, like Councilman Bradigan mentioned, that we look at the, the problem and try to understand it. It's, it's this problem coming not just from people in mobile home park, people in apartments or multi-unit, multi-unit dwellings that park on public street that causing the problem for, for the neighborhood, but also from business. There's a lot of business along, you know, in the area that now have their employee park in their business. And then other involving, you know, shopping center that they do not have enough parking, so now they start to park along the street growth to that shopping center. So I think, I think it's very important to, to really ground out, to understand the heart of the problem, and each problem may require a slightly different solution, and that is a key. I hope we would have a study session, and staff would be open to think out the box and find a solution rather than the, you know, not more answer that. and find a solution rather than the, you know, not more answer that I have hearing years in and years out that there is not much we can do. So, so that is my, my, that is what I hope that we strive to try to solve. Because this problem has been going on, and the resident have been report about it for years and years, and nothing changed.
I'll throw in two cents real quick, because Mayor Steve Jones, George challenged us to think outside the box. So possibly creative solutions like adjusting parking requirements for the mobile home parks for their, for their common open space, possibly allow them to pave over some of the underutilized common open space and create more parking onsite as opposed to spilling out over the streets, just as a possible solution. Maybe that doesn't work for some sort of planner code standpoint, but it's something to look at. Also, possibility of adding more street parking by, by creating diagonal or head-in street parking on some of those over wide streets there on Lamson and Hester and some of, some of those areas that maybe could accommodate lane, going on a lane diet or roadway diet, narrowing the lanes, and adding more diagonal curb parking or things like that. That may be able to create, create more parking without having to go to a permit system or without having to red curb things which only pushes the problem elsewhere down the street and creates other hassles or, you know. So there are some things that don't work, and there's other things that we could do to get creative to maybe allow more parking to be created in places where it's not currently allowed. So just two cents about, you know, let's approach it creatively, and maybe the Traffic Commission can look at it from that vantage point, too.
Certainly. And, and also Mayor Jones and, and council members. One of the other things that really concern me, and I have screaming every time, the issue that state mandated us to build more ADU, or relaxing the parking requirement for ADU, or high-density housing. So for sure, it will hugely impact, you know, us. So I, I, I think we, we need to look into what do we, what can we do in order to, to deal with this problem? Because with 19,000 more residential unit, it, it is going to make parking become unbearable for, for many of us.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Anything else on this? Or I think, I think Scott, staff, you have probably pretty good direction for a starting point to say, we're looking for solutions, not just kind of, you know, that nothing can be done. And I think that's the, and get creative with it.
Yeah, we do, and we will communicate council's wishes to the Traffic Commission, too, at their next meeting, and give the Traffic Commission guidance on what we'd like them to do in conjunction with the staff, looking at some of these best practice ideas. You know, anything and everything's on the table. And so the staff will be, you know, we're a resource to the Traffic Commission and the council to try and, you know, give good advice on, on some of these things. So we'll, you know, we can also spend some time, you know, looking at, you know, what's going on in some other cities, and if council members have any particular, you know, ideas, things like the mayor just talked about, or any specific traffic reduction plans that you're familiar that other cities have done, you know, please share those with my office, and we'll incorporate any of those research tasks in the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember here, just give me one more minute. Scott, when the Traffic Commission do the study session, I think it will be important for them to also include people who are severely affected by, by this issue, and invite them to come and share with them the perspectives that they have.
Yes, sure. We will, we will certainly do that. We'll let council members know, too, so that, you know, if there's constituents that you have that want to be in the loop on this as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Deidra Tuhoen.
I have nothing to report, but first, I just want to say congratulations on the anniversary, Councilmember Cloppenstein and Eric.
Thank you.
And, and as we, celebrating the Lunar New Year coming up in a few days, I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy New Year, and may the Lunar New Year bless you with the health and wealth and the happiness. I know 2020 is the challenge that we face together, and looking forward, you know, after Friday is the Lunar New Year, bring us luck and joy and a better future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember John O'Neill.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment. I just want to let everybody know, if they haven't already heard, that, you know, Disneyland is going to be starting to open some of the downtown Disney or California adventure attractions on a ticketed basis, mainly so they can control population in there. But the reason I bring that up is that's going to start happening in March. They're already bringing employees back to work, which means Anaheim residents, Garden Grove residents, people that work there, not only the, the servers and the cooks and the maintenance people, there's so many people behind the scenes, but our hotels are open. I think the Great Wolf is still closed, but all the other hotels are open, so, you know, safely. Obviously, everybody is doing what they can to still stay safe and get vaccinated and, you know, still wash your hands and do all that. But people are going back to work, so that's a good thing. Just wanted to bring that up, and a lot of them live right here in Garden Grove. And then also want to wish Councilwoman Cloppenstein and her husband Eric a very happy 13th, lucky 13th anniversary.
Thank you.
It's a blessing to, to have a relationship like that and your beautiful daughter, so I wish you guys the best.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's all I have, thanks.
Councilmember George Fredegham.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, happy birthday this week to my daughter Julie. Got to say that, or she'll probably get mad at me. And happy anniversary to Stephanie and Eric Cloppenstein.
Thank you.
I do have something I want to remind the public. There is COVID-19 rental assistance now available through the county and the county website. Application deadline, February 1st through February 28th. So if, you know, you have, have been having problems making in meat because of this COVID, please check there. There is some financial assistance available for renters. Unfortunately, nothing for homeowners, but hopefully we'll get something soon on that. Lastly, I want to strongly, and I do mean strongly urge Garden Grove Unified School District to open, open. You know, the children, our community are depending on, on our teachers and our schools for their educational, emotional, psychological, physical well-being. You know, follow the science, teachers. You have the safest public septic job with the least likelihood of any transmission. Every other public septic job has been open. They've been working throughout this pandemic with much greater risks. Your police, your fire, your nurses, your doctors, your ambulance drivers, they're all out there working, they haven't taken a break. Time for teachers to step up, go back to work, open up Garden Grove Unified. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, we had a closed session earlier tonight, but there was no reportable action. City Manager Scott Stiles, anything for the good of the order?
No further items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Peggy McClure, who was a 45-year West Garden Grove resident who recently passed away peacefully after reaching her 95th birthday. So in honor of Peggy McClure, we will close tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your evening, and we'll see you again in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.